Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Are you with us?
I am, yes. Good morning.
All right, sir. The time is 10:00 a.m. The meeting is recording, and it looks like we do have you and Commissioner Feinstein on call. We do have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. I hereby call to order this meeting to the Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Commission. Today is Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, and the time is 10:00 a.m. With those commissioners in attendance, please identify themselves and state as to whether they are here in person or via telephone or via Google meets.
This is Eric Feinstein. I'm here via Google meets.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm Scott Fletcher. I am here via telephone. Moving on to B, our new business is pursuant to ARS Section 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-2-C604 for persons over the age of 36, the new license application submitted by Mr. Eduardo Monreal for a 2024 professional boxer license. Mr. Vella, you speak to Mr. Monreal's application, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Monreal is 38 years old. He is 1-0 as a professional boxer. He won his his debut bout back in July of this year by a second-round TKO. He, if approved, he would be competing against a similarly skilled boxer named Bryce Logan, who is also 1-0. As far as Mr. Monreal's training regimen is concerned, he trains three to four hours a day, six days a week. Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, he does one to two hours of roadwork, breakfast, he rests, and then he does 15 minutes of jumping rope, 30 minutes shadow boxing. He's excited and prepared for his upcoming bout. He says that he feels ready to compete because he's getting better all around and he feels extremely good. He has not experienced any recent injuries, but he said that in addition to the training that I had mentioned earlier, he does 12 bags or 12 rounds of bag work, and in the evening time, he does one-hour strength training, which consists of a 10-minute stretch. Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, he does a one-hour swim early in the morning. Or in the evening, he does six to 12 rounds of sparring. With all of that information, sir, I do recommend that we approve this license.
Thank you. Mr. Vella, Commissioner Feinsteing, any thoughts about Mr. Monreal's application?
No concerns from me, Mr. Chairman.
I share your lack of concern. Chair, be open to a motion if there is one.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228, and AAC R19-C604, I move that we approve the new license application submitted by Mr. Eduardo Monreal for a 2024 professional boxer's license.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I am going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor, sign a copy saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Monreal. We look forward to your upcoming bout. Let's press on to item C, our information reports. C1 is our event reports. The following events were conditionally approved by the Executive Director from June 20 to August 19th, 2024. The first was a request from Iron Boy Combat Sports LLC for approval of a boxing event to be held at the Celebrity Theater in Phoenix, Arizona on Saturday, August 24th, 2024. The second was a request from United Fight League LLC for approval of an MMA event to be held at Wild Horse Past Casino in Chandler, Arizona on Friday, August 30th, 2024. The third was a request from Thunderbolt Boxing LLC for approval of a boxing event to be held at the Stratus Event Center in Phoenix, Arizona on Friday, September 6th, 2024. The fourth is a request from UCAN LLC for approval of an MMA event to be held at the Glendale Civic Center in Glendale, Arizona on Saturday, September 7th, 2024. The fifth is a request from Top Rank Incorporated for approval of a boxing event to be held at the Desert Diamond Arena in Glendale, Arizona on Friday, September 20th, 2024, and the sixth is also a request from Top Rank Incorporated for approval of a boxing event to be held at the Footprint Center in Phoenix, Arizona on Saturday, December 7th, 2024. Six more great events with some great promoters, Mr. Vella. It's, we've got a full fall coming together.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We're looking forward to it.
Very good. Well, let's, let's continue on down the path. Pursuant to ARS Section, Arizona Vice Statute, Section 38-431.02, notice is hereby given to the general public that commission members of the Arizona Boxing and MMA Commission may be in attendance at the aforementioned event. As such, a quorum of the commission, the commission may be present. The commission members will not be discussing business unless necessary to do so by means of an emergency ringside meeting as authorized by ARS Section 5-223. Item C2 is our legislative changes. Review of the commission's authority in light of legislative changes, Senate Bill 1679, set to take effect on September 14th, 2024. The commission may vote to go into executive session under ARS Section 38-431.03A3 and/or 4 in order to discuss its attorney, discuss this matter, I'm sorry, with its attorney on this matter. Mr. Vella, will you speak to this, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As you know, Governor Hobbs signed SB 1679 into law a couple of months ago, and the changes are set to take effect on September 14th, 2024. So we wanted to advise the commission and numbers of the public of that effective date. And I also felt it'd be a good opportunity for the, for the commission, if you so wish, to go into executive session to understand from a legal perspective what, what these changes will entail.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Mr. Feinsteing, your thoughts regarding executive session and these changes?
So having been involved in advocating for this legislation, I'm obviously very supportive of, of these changes, and I would like to convene with Mr. Vella and the rest of the commission to discuss how we operationalize the changes of the legislation within the commission, but I'm very, very supportive of, of the change.
As am I. I appreciate it. I appreciate everyone's efforts to get this passed, and I think good things await. Is now the time to do this, or shall we wait till this takes effect?
I, my personal feeling is that there's no, you know, burning issue that I think we need to work through until the legislation goes into effect. So I would be in favor of continuing the meeting and getting through the rest of the agenda items unless Mr. Chairman or Mr. Vella, you feel that there's something that we need to discuss in executive session.
Commissioner, I appreciate that. Yeah, you, we did include as part of the commission packet the several documents that have many, much of the information that we would have otherwise discussed. So if you're content with that information and you don't feel that it's necessary to go into executive session today, I imagine we could press on.
Okay, let's, let's do that, Mr. Vella. I look, look forward to talking with our attorneys about this and how best to implement all this, but let's make sure it's on the next agenda and we get a chance to do so.
Or, or alternatively, Mr. Chairman, could we, if our attorneys are present, and I do value their time, and there are some things they want to speak to us with regard to the new legislation, could we work through the regular agenda and then go to executive session so we don't keep everybody waiting?
Good thought. Sure. Why don't we do that? Let's table this and we'll circle back.
If I may, this is Val Marcianno, Chairman. The open meeting would still need to remain open when the commission goes into executive session so that if anyone wants to stay and hear if there's any further discussion after the executive session closes, that would be the best way to handle this.
Sure, absolutely, and we'll, we'll do it exactly that way, but it gives some people who don't have an interest to go, go pursue other things today, too. I hate keeping them too long through this, so I think this is probably the best way to handle it. So let's do that. Let's press on to item three, C3, the Bare Knuckle Inquiry. Bare Knuckle Fighting Championship, the BKFC, has expressed interest in promoting events in Arizona. Medical data and unified rules presented by the Association of Boxing and Combat sports commissions, the ABC, are included in this agenda. The commission may vote to go into executive session under ARS Sections 38-431.03A3 and/or 4 in order to discuss with its attorneys on this matter. Can we table this and hold this for the backend, too, and maybe we can do a well-rounded executive session, including the Bare Knuckle Inquiry?
Yes, this is Val Marcianno. Yes, you can do that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Val. Appreciate your help. Okay, let's head to four, which is the ABC Convention. The convention took place in Louisville, Kentucky this past July. Amendments were made to the unified rule sets of MMA and bare knuckle respectively, and unified rules were adopted for Muay Thai. The ABC's effective date for these changes is November 1st, 2024. Mr. Vella, you're in attendance at that ABC Convention, I believe. Can you speak to this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So as it states, there were amendments made to the unified rules of MMA and bare knuckle. The most significant changes include redefining grounded fighter in MMA and striking the striking the down, our 12-6 elbow from being a rule infringement or foul, rather. And so those are the two significant changes that were made, and then obviously the adoption of Muay Thai unified rules. I believe it's the first time the ABC's adopted a unified set of rules before it was just guidelines and recommendations. So it was a very effective convention, and we had a great time, learned a lot, and and we just wanted to present this to the public so that everybody would know that, you know, come November 1st, that the unified rules changes will be implemented.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Yeah, it's critically important regardless of what combat sport we're talking about, that we we all work together, all the various commissions in the country, and having unified rules are fantastic things, especially Muay Thai. It's been a long time coming, so that's great news. Commissioner Feinsteing, any thoughts about the convention and the rule sets?
No, I look forward to reviewing all the changes, but the ones that you mentioned in MMA are certainly welcome, rule changes.
Agreed. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Vella, let's go to D, call to the public. Those members of the public wishing to address a mission must attend via video conference and either utilize the raise hand function or message the media host directly to be recognized by the chair. We would ask you hold comments to five minutes. Mr. Vella, are there folks that would like to talk to us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. It appears that Mr. Sean Wheelock from the BKFC has his hand raised.
Very good.
Mr. Vella, thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Sean Wheelock, so I am with Bare Knuckle Fighting Championship. I serve a couple of roles. I'm a television play-by-play commentator. I'm also part of the ownership group, as a very small percentage, and I'm an executive vice president doing commission relations and regulatory affairs. I served for eight years on the Kansas Athletic Commission. I was appointed proudly by both a Republican and a Democrat. I'm not sure how I pulled that off, but so I have tremendous respect for the job because I've sat on your side. And I'll also add that I attended Arizona State University, as did my late father, who got his doctorate there. I'm a native Kansan, but Arizona is my second state. Personally, it means a lot to me if you would allow Bare Knuckle Fighting Championship to come into your state just because of my ties and my late father's ties to the state of Arizona and the fact that I did live in Arizona when I attended college. Very briefly on Bare Knuckle Fighting Championship, so we are now fully legalized and recognized in 24 states as well as numerous ABC member commissions that are tribal. We've only pursued ABC member tribal commissions. One of those commissions is Mike Mizzouli, the president of the ABC, his Mohegan Sun Commission. That's something that we're very proud of. Within your region, Bare Knuckle Fighting Championship is now legalized in California, New Mexico, Utah, Colorado, Wyoming, Oklahoma. Overall, we've just had our 99th event. That was last Friday in my home city, Kansas City. To date, we've done 1,029 bouts. We launched on June 2nd, 2018, in Wyoming. We've done the United States as well as Six Nations. Spain will become our seventh foreign nation. We'll be there in Marbella, Spain on October 12th. Conor McGregor's part of our ownership group. Couple of things, and I do work in television, so I can definitely hit your clock and hit the mark to the second. Along with the UFC, we're the only two promotions in North America that have a chief medical officer. We have a neuroanesthesiologist, Dr. Don Mutzy, who's based in Florida now. He was previously at the Mayo Clinic. He works in conjunction with your medical team. By no means, if you would have us in, does Dr. Mutzy overstep. He works absolutely at your pleasure and with your medical team. One thing Dr. Mutzy has done is compile data, peer-reviewed, it's been professionally published in a scholarly journal, which I believe that Mr. Vella has made to all of you. Bare Knuckle Fighting Championship is something that we've run towards regulation. We've never done an outlaw show. We've never gone to a non-ABC member commission. All of our fights that we do internationally are regulated. We've used the ISKA. We use in Spain, for instance, that will be under the Mohegan tribe. So everything is entered in the MMA database. It's entered in BoxRec. We follow all protocol. We only have professional fights. The fighters that we pull from are predominantly from MMA. We have had nine former major organization boxing world champions in Bare Knuckle Fighting Championship. Our alumni from the UFC is over 40. From Bellator, it's over 50. I have a minute 45 remaining. If there are any questions on the AFC, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Wheelock. Appreciate you joining us. We are a commission, like many, that's focused very much so on fighter safety. Commissioner Feinstein is referred to as Dr. Feinstein most of the time, and he's a longtime ringside physician, so we put a real priority on fighter safety. I appreciate the, the pieces that you've sent us. Anything else you might have regarding that would be very helpful, I think, as we talk more about this.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Feinsteing, what thoughts do you have, sir?
Well, I appreciate you being here and speaking to the commission. I think that obviously, as a, as a trauma surgeon, I view this largely through the lens of fighter safety. And I think I'm going to need to really look at the data, read the scholarly article that you forwarded, and talk to some other experts, probably reach out to some people in some other states that have approved this as we consider this very thoughtfully. And try to also understand what the, what, what gap is this filling in the combat sports world? In other words, you know, you've got boxing, you've got Muay Thai, you've got MMA. What, what gap is this filling for the fans, for, for, for the state? Why do we need another combat sport, which is, presents a different set of risks and rules that we would certainly have to expand the commission in order to adopt?
Yes, sir. So if I may address those, so, and I would be happy to put you with Dr. Mutzy or any of the states, including California, that you would like to speak to on that. I, having been a commissioner for eight years in Kansas, and I started in all of this as a boxing referee, so fighter safety has always been my mantra on this. I simply would not be in this sport. I was previously at Bellator, before that at Pride, so I'm 18 years in the combat sports industry. I take that extremely seriously as well. As you'll see in the peer-reviewed data, our, our actual cuts are definitely high. Our hand fractures, our orbital fractures, our hospital transports, our, our head traumas are all markedly lower, markedly lower than professional boxing and professional MMA. We definitely put a premium on fighter safety. The fighters who we use are established professionals in other sports. As to the gap, sir, I would tell you that this is an opportunity for fighters who maybe have been released from the UFC in their twenties, late twenties, early thirties. Someone like Mike Trizano, who's 29 years old, who went two and three in the UFC, to continue to still make a living as a full-time professional fighter. It's also given opportunities for fighters. Our 145-pound champion is a former NAI, the College Wrestling All-American. He had one professional MMA fight. He fell in love with this. His name is Kai Stewart. He sees this as his path forward. He feels that his passion is for this, where he could probably be in the UFC and be an accomplished fighter. Early on, we definitely used older fighters in 2018, 2019. That was because that was all that was available. Now we have, again, a 24-year-old 145-pound champion. Our female champion is 27 years old. Our 175-pound champion is 29 years old. We're using younger fighters. You'll see that our ages match up very favorably with what you will see if you bring in a major boxing or bring in the UFC. Bellator no longer exists. I used to work for them, but I did compile data at one point that we were actually quite a bit younger on average age than Bellator. In terms of the sport, I know economics is certainly a secondary factor, or maybe even below that. Primarily, it's fighter safety. We are putting on major shows, though. We had our debut in South Dakota three weeks ago. Our attendance was 15,200. We did a co-promotion with Ryzen in Tokyo. Three weeks ago, the attendance was 48,100. I won't claim all that for us because Manny Pacquiao fought on the card, but we are doing major shows. When we made our debut in Los Angeles, we sold out Peacock Theater, a little over 9,000. Again, I understand that that's not the primary issue, sir. It's definitely fighter safety, but we do make a positive economic impact. You'll see that our professionalism, I believe, ranks with what you would see with the UFC or PBC or Top Rank.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wheelock. Appreciate you joining us, and anything you think we should take a look at, we would love to take a look at it. So I've done through the piece that was sent out, but if you have anything else that you think is relevant, we'd love to see it. Maybe send Mr. Vella, and he'll get it out to us.
Sir, I will, absolutely, and I will get updated medical information from Dr. Mutzy, and I'll also make Dr. Mutzy's contact information available. He's actually in brain surgery today, which is a good excuse, but I will definitely make him available. He does work for us as our chief medical officer, but I believe he's beyond reproach when it comes to integrity. And Mike Mizzouli, the, the president of the ABC, who was someone who we really had to win over again. We're now legal in Mohegan, and Mike is actually regulating our European events through his Mohegan tribe. That's another resource, but I so appreciate the time. Again, Arizona is something very special to me, and I definitely appreciate the time and the consideration for our organization. Thank you.
We appreciate you joining us. Thank you. More to come. Mr. Vella, anyone else like to chat with us?
Yes, sir. Chairman, it appears that Mr. Peter McKinnon has his hand raised.
Hey, good mornings. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I have a question. I work, I work with Thunderbolt Promotions. I'm their coordinator and administrator. For some of you that know me, I've been a long, I've got about 25 years in the business, and I'm still semi, I'm kind of retired, and I do these shows every once in a while. My only concern that I wanted to ask and clarify, get a clarification, was on the SB that you spoke about, that you spoke about, goes into effect on September the 14th, and then I heard the word implement. Does it go into effect September 14th, or is there going to be a time period that you're going to need to implement the rules?
Mr. Vella, will you speak to this?
Val, are we permitted to respond during, call to the public?
No, no, you can put that on another agenda item to be addressed at a different, different time, or the alternative is the executive session could be called, and following the executive session, the executive director or a commission member might be able to respond to the question.
Okay, then.
Thank you, Val. Yeah, I have, I have another question. So when the state, when the states okay's the rules to go into effect, does the department have a certain amount of time that they have to implement? Is there a timeline?
Do I have a position to answer questions like this?
The only reason I'm asking is because we have a show on October the 18th, and we have a lot of heavyweights that are over 38 years old. And we're just trying to prepare. Do we stay underneath the 38-year rule? Or do we, or can we prepare for to an October 18th show to look for 38-year-old fighters to fight?
Chairman Val Marcianno, I think we can discuss this in executive session, and then the commission and/or executive director Vella can respond either by putting it on next agenda item or possibly a special meeting that could be called. So I would suggest that the request or stay on the line in case he can get some more direction following executive session.
Okay, or Val, this is one promoter asking a specific question about one event. Can Mr. Vella contact him directly after this and then walk him through what he should be worried about, if anything?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask one more question? I just have one more question to ask.
Yes, sir.
In fairness to all the licensed promoters, matchmakers, managers, will you send a memorandum to everyone on the implemented new rules so that we're, we're all on the same on the same page as the boxing commission of what rules, what to expect from the future to come and how to use them? A memorandum for hoping?
Yes. How do we plan to let the world know what, if anything, has changed in their world?
Was that a question of mine, Mr. Pearson?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yes, we do intend to send a public notice to all licensees and to the general public.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, very good. You should expect that, Mr. McKinnon. Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
No, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Vella, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, it does not appear that we have a hand raised, and I would like to clarify, we will not send a legal memo, but a, but a general outline notice to licensees in the general.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Item E is the call to the commission. Commission members or the executive director may introduce a summary of current events, ask questions, and/or make comments. Mr. Vella, anything else you'd like to talk about?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to point out that we've had some really great events recently. We've had our fighters, and our licensees, our promoters, everybody's acted with the utmost professionalism. They've been timely in getting documents submitted to us, and so I just want to give kudos to all of our licensees out there that have participated in recent events and encourage them to continue with what they're doing. Fighters are making weight, and our weigh-ins and events are going very smoothly. So again, I just appreciate that and encourage everybody to continue on that trend. We have had, as you, as you mentioned, we've had a lot of interests in the fall. We're going to have a very busy fall and winter ahead of us for the remainder of 2024, and therefore, we look forward to it. And again, we're grateful for everybody's professionalism and attention to detail in all the submissions to, to the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Vella. Agreed. We have a spectacular group of promoters we work with. It is not loft on how hard it is to put together a professional event and cross every T and dot every I, but we're blessed to have some great promoters working in the state of Arizona and some fantastic events. It's a great time to be a fight fan, I think, in Arizona, because there's some great events. Thank you, Mr. Vella. Commissioner Feinstein, any thoughts?
No, I would just echo some of Mr. Vella's sentiments. I want to commend the commission, particularly the leadership of Mr. Vella and, and the promoters for putting on some really outstanding shows over the last several months. A huge amount of effort, I know, goes into these, and they've really been some, some flawless shows with great fighter safety, outstanding operations. They've run very smoothly, almost without exception. And I think this commission continues to improve every event, and we're not resting on our laurels and saying, oh, we're, we're, we're doing a good job. It just, it's, it's, it's a commission that I think is very receptive to suggestion and improvement. Mr. Vella does a great job of going through the event afterwards to talk about what we could do better, and I think that's resulted in a commission that's really nationally and, and really internationally recognized for our professionalism and and uh and and the way that we put on shows in a way that's great for fighters, great for fans, and um and that we're a good partner to the promoters. So uh I just, I just want to um say that uh it's exciting to support this growth and uh look forward to what's ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Feinstein. Appreciate your thoughts. Um, great things, great things ahead, Mr. Vella. You've done a great job at the helm. We're really uh really thankful for your efforts. Um, let me make F the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at ten AM on Wednesday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and is subject to change based on a quorum, which leads me back to item C two, the specter of a possible executive session. Um, at this point, we've made it through the agenda. It's possible we go into an executive session, and when we return, we will have pretty much an adjournment to talk about, but uh is there a motion for an executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uh move to the executive session.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. We are headed into executive session. All members of the public must uh step away, and we will we will be back at some point when we're done. I can't tell you when that is, but thank you all for joining us today. Mr. Vella, will you prepare the room?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You just uh call under the other link, uh the executive session. You should have received the invitation for that. It's a separate uh meeting.
Yes, okay, we will see you there. Thank you. Um, and I think this commission continues to improve every event, and um we're not um uh resting on our laurels and saying, oh, we're 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 doing a good job. Uh, it just, it's 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 a a commission that I think is very receptive to suggestion and improvement. Um, um, Mr. Vella does a great job of going through the event afterwards to talk about what we could do better, and I think that's resulted in a commission that's really nationally and and really internationally recognized for our professionalism and uh and and the way that we put on shows in a way that's great for fighters, great for fans, and um and that we're a good partner to the promoters. So uh I just I just want to um say that uh it's exciting to support this growth and uh look forward to what's ahead. Yes, thank you, Mr. Feinstein. Appreciate your thoughts. Um, great things, great things ahead, Mr. Vella. You've done a great job at the helm. We're really uh really thankful for your efforts. Um, let me make F, the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024, and is subject to change based on a quorum, which leads me back to item C two, the specter of a possible executive session. Um, at this point, we've made it through the agenda. It's possible we go to an executive session, and when we return, we will have pretty much an adjournment to talk about, but uh is there a motion for an executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uh move to the executive session.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. We are headed into executive session. All members of the public must uh step away, and we will we will be back at some point when we're done. I can't tell you when that is, but thank you all for joining us today. Mr. Vella, will you prepare the room?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You would just call under the other link, uh, the executive session. You should have received the invitation for that. It's a separate uh meeting.
Yes, okay. We will see you there. Thank you. Um, and I think this commission continues to improve every event, and um we're not um uh resting on our laurels and saying, oh, we're 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 doing a good job. Uh, it just, it's 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 a a commission that I think is very receptive to suggestion and improvement. Um, um, Mr. Vella does a great job of going through the event afterwards to talk about what we could do better, and I think that's resulted in a commission that's really nationally and and really internationally recognized for our professionalism and uh and and the way that we put on shows in a way that's great for fighters, great for fans, and um and that we're a good partner to the promoters. So uh I just I just want to um say that uh it's exciting to support this growth and uh look forward to what's ahead. Yes, thank you, Mr. Feinstein. Appreciate your thoughts. Um, great things, great things ahead, Mr. Vella. You've done a great job at the helm. We're really uh really thankful for your efforts. Um, let me make F, the announcement that the next regularly scheduled commission meeting will be at 10:00 AM on Wednesday, September 18th, 2024, and is subject to change based on a quorum, which leads me back to item C two, the specter of a possible executive session. Um, at this point, we've made it through the agenda. It's possible we go to an executive session, and when we return, we will have pretty much an adjournment to talk about, but uh is there a motion for an executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we uh move to the executive session.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. I'm going to second that motion. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two to zero. We are headed into executive session. All members of the public must uh step away, and we will we will be back at some point when we're done. I can't tell you when that is, but thank you all for joining us today. Mr. Vella, will you prepare the room?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You would just call under the other link, uh, the executive session. You should have received the invitation for that. It's a separate uh meeting.
Yes, okay. We will see you there. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, are you with us?
I am, yes.
Oh, yes, you can hear you.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Would it be okay if I moved that we adjourn the meeting?
I believe you. Yes, yes, it would, please.
Uh, so I move that uh we adjourn uh adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion, which I'm going to second. We now have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries two to zero. We are officially adjourned. Uh, thank you all for your time. Uh, much more to come. Uh, very exciting times for us all. Val, thank you so much for your help. Mr. Vella, take care.
Thank you.
Thank you.